Allegiance, if you'd like to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You're welcome. Do we need to start with a roll call? Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Everyone is present and we do have a quorum.
Nice, thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve that agenda? Mr. Welling?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Perk seconding. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We have to acknowledge the minutes for November 5th, the special minutes, the special council minutes of November 12, and the work session minutes for November 12 as well. Any concerns with those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they're all prepared. Then we'll go on to bills. Got a warrant register? Assume you all have a copy of it? Questions on the bills? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch?
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers, seconding. Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved. And the revenue and expenditure report for July? Same thing there. Any questions, comments? Concerns? Is there a motion to approve that report?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Segalman, seconding. Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what's on your mind tonight, sir?
Nothing tonight since we've got such a busy meeting.
Hey, Mr. Evans?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and do what you can to help those that are a little less fortunate than yourself if you get a chance over the Thanksgiving break.
Excellent.
I have nothing to make, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling?
Just a reminder that Friday night is the youth club casino night. It's a fundraiser for the youth club. Come join the fun. Come to my table and I'll make you win.
I'll help you win.
I don't know if he wanted to say that out in public.
It's a fundraiser.
I'll help you.
I'll make you win.
Don't take a card. Don't take a card. It's not like it's real money.
Right, Jesse? Are you doing?
I'm gonna try and make some money for the youth club. I don't know what you're doing, but yeah.
That's why we make money.
We better just go on to Mr. Sellers.
Yeah, we better shut up now. So it's good.
So I was gonna mention the youth club fundraiser. The Arts Inc. also is having a fundraiser Thursday night and Friday night. They're teaming with the movie house and they're having a showing of Wicked. Proceeds are going to help the Arts Inc. and help do the Kelpie Festival and those things. I'd like also to thank those who voted for me. It's an honor to serve everyone and I look forward to serving the next four years. And lastly, I'm not sure if everybody knows or have been acquainted with Roy Waldridge. He's the guy that's been in charge for like the last 25 years of distributing the money that comes into the red kettles for Salvation Army. And so he's getting ready to retire. And so I just want to honor him for his service to our community the last 25 years. I've had the opportunity, I volunteer Thursday afternoons and work with him Thursday afternoon. And it's interesting to watch what that money goes for and it's nice to know that the money collected stays in our community. We're limited on what we can do with people because of the amount that comes in, but it's a great opportunity to give back and knowing that it all comes back into our community. So, thank you.
Ms. Agalaville?
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next Thursday and hopefully you avoid the plague that is going around. I didn't, I wasn't so lucky. It got me. So if I sound a little like B. Arthur this evening, that's why. And just remember to keep your, the, watch out for the people. This is a hard time of year for everyone, you know, for people that are in, they're missing people from everybody from their military that's deployed and it's hard. It's a hard time of year for a lot of people, so walk next door, check on people and your seniors and your, sorry, still a little bit under the weather. You get what I'm saying. You know, Evanston is one of the most amazing communities I have ever been lucky enough to live in because we reach out to our community and we're so in touch. And though we get busy with our loved ones this time of year, just keeping a little bit of an extra eye out.
Thank you. I'll just add my wish as well for everybody to have a good Thanksgiving and hope that's the case across the community and we can move on. We have no public hearings or special orders. We do have one consent agenda item that's a common occurrence this time of year with our Shop With A Cop Parade. I can't imagine there being any concerns with that parade, so I'll just entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Fine. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor. It's a good program.
Discussion?
Wakes everybody up that day.
You always have to remember.
I get texts, "What's going on in town?"
Any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved. And thank you to those guys that express our appreciation to the police department, sheriff's office, I think the highway patrol gets a little involved in that sometimes too, don't they? Yeah, excellent. We have no unfinished business. We'll go on to new business and our first item there is to entertain a motion to the final acceptance of the City View project. Is there anything more we need to know about that before we?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No, nothing out of the norm. It's just part of the finaling process for the local government program, so for the district engineer to buy off on it, he just needs the concurrence of what the project was.
It's good to have that project along with the overpass done and behind us. And I guess I'd have to say as you look back, the time really didn't seem like all that long for either one of us.
Unless you lived on that street.
I think you can speak for yourself.
What was the final tally on that road, City View?
Those numbers I don't see daily. As far as I know, it was on budget for what it was awarded to, which I want to say is like 2.6. But I'm not aware of anything that was catastrophically different.
It just seemed like it went a little smoother than what maybe we feared. But if you find those figures, could you just text them to me or something? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I can ask what at least the current numbers are and once I get those, I'll share them accordingly.
Thank you.
I don't mean to be the Debbie Downer on it, but the patch job they did on that upper part that got done the year before, right there on City View, where they'd kind of trench near the Irving. It's not spectacular. I mean, it's fine, but not the greatest of patch jobs. And I drive it a ton, so I notice it. Maybe nobody else notices it, but I just, it sucks that that road got done the year before and then they come in and had to patch it and it's not the greatest. But I do like the City View, the whole rest of the project, so.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this final acceptance.
I'd like that motion.
I'll second. Mr. Sellers? Mr. Lynch, is that what I heard down here? Seconding, any discussion? Discussion? There's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. Resolution 2475. Mr. Harris, you read that title for us, please.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2475, a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming authorizing the execution of a grant award agreement with the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security to obtain funds which are designated for law enforcement terrorism prevention oriented activities and equipment.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Mayor, Council, this is our annual award that we reach out to the state from the Homeland Security Office. This year, we're asking for roughly $29,000 in change to purchase some in-car radios. Over the years, we've been purchasing these radios in anticipation of going to what everybody refers to as Wyolink. We have found out that the older radios that we have recycled over the years, up to seven years ago, these radios are not compatible now, nor is Motorola or Kenwood supporting the software to upgrade these radios. So now we are running into, we have to put the cart before the horse again and buy the radios to upgrade the current fleet. So that's why we applied for the radio equipment with, in the hopes that they would fund it because it's quite a chunk. I think our truck radios, the hand packs that we carry on our hips are close to $4,000 each and the ones in the trucks are closer to 5,500 to 5,600 each. So this will get us ahead of the game a little bit. And typically, we don't ask for the entire fleet to be replaced. They frown upon that. They want us to piecemeal it in say three-year increments because if we go in and ask them for 160,000 and replace them all, it'll be like, well, in five years, you're gonna be in here asking us for another 160,000. So we piecemeal a third of the fleet at a time to get them up to standards.
Excellent. It's always been amazing to me how expensive the radios are.
Oh, it's ridiculous.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce the motion to pass.
Welling, the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Perk seconding. Discussion?
I heard the sheriff's department's trying to get some funding for these same radios. Is that true? So as far as the county can go on this?
Yes, we're actually reaching out to privately get our radios coded to where we'll be able to, so we have the codes for the brand-new radios that we just purchased, the hand packs that we can talk on Wyolink, however, and the brand-new truck radios that we have. We have four in the fleet, I think, maybe five, that we can actually talk on Wyolink to where we can talk to the troopers, the county if they're operating on Wyolink. But the majority of the fleet can't talk to troopers, can't even hear troopers out on the highway, which is a disadvantage to the troopers and ourselves because we'll roll up there and help them with a DUI or crash or whatever without having to go through Cheyenne, through UNO County to us. It just saves time. But the county is attempting to purchase more and then our private contractor we're reaching out to is in the process of building the code plugs to be able to put it into the laptop, put the cable to the radio, press that, and they're uploaded in about seven to eight minutes each. So that's where we're at with that. And I had a target deadline that I wanted it done by November 1st for the Patrol Division. Family emergencies with our guy that builds the code plugs for us came up and so we're behind schedule, so now I'm hoping January 1st we can get it done and be able to be up and running.
I have a question. This weekend, are some of our trucks, snowplows, why not help the highway department? Are we gonna have to put Wyolink radios in our plow trucks so we can talk to highway patrol where they, in case, this was some extreme weird happening?
Yes, if you're going to talk to the troopers, unless they go to analog, they still have the capability of going analog, but then they don't hear Cheyenne unless they notify Cheyenne, but then there are other trooper partners are not hearing what they're chirping about for, but yes, the plow trucks will have to consider that also.
I'd say it was very rare that we've done that. No.
Right. And I mean, these guys are very responsive to a phone call. They'd be like, "Yeah, we can get there." So, I mean, they helped us out with that bridge on 5 this year, this last weekend because that was a mess. Mother Nature was like, "Hold on, here we go."
Someday we'll all get on the same sheet of music.
Maybe.
Maybe.
They've been practicing it since 1996, so.
Long time.
You get the right weather conditions. I've seen multiple years that there, just that one freak storm that causes, that bridge jump 5 is terrible.
Nasty. Well, it's a turn, it's elevated, it's windy there.
Thank you.
Perfect storm.
Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you. Resolution 2476, Mr. Harris, please.
Attorney Counsel, resolution 2476 is a resolution authorizing the City of Evanston, Wyoming to accept and approve a renewal offer with Delta Dental of Wyoming to provide dental insurance for city employees.
Thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Lynn?
Our dental insurance renews in January where our medical renews in July, so this one always comes up in the middle of the year. It's through Delta Dental with Dan Hoffman as the agent. And this year, there is 0% increase and no changes to the insurance, so.
That is crazy.
Dental, we usually don't have a lot of changes. No. Dental's usually pretty good.
Insurance didn't go up. That doesn't, that doesn't.
This is just dental.
Right. Yeah, hang on to her. Excellent, that's good news. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Lynn with a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, seconding. Discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is approved, thank you. Ms. Lynn, do you have anything more for us tonight when we go through our department remarks? Oh, you're right there. Ms. Newsome? Ms. Robinson back there. Ms. Larson, see who? I gotta get my eyes focused, I can see there, back that far. Mr. O'Neill? It's Harris.
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Harris?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing? Public participation, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? Please come forward.
Hello, I'm Gina Sunquist. I've been away and have been at trainings for work and so I want to apologize, I've been missing a few of the meetings. I just wanted to do a follow-up and see how things are going with the air conditioning talk at the machine shop.
Well, I guess I'll jump in there if somebody else has got something to say. I mean, like we kind of mentioned before, it's on the radar. This is probably going to be something that we'll talk about in the upcoming budget year and those discussions will be starting soon, so.
Okay.
I don't think there's been anything done, you know, in the last little while that you've missed at all, but it's certainly on the list of things to discuss when we talk about our upcoming budget.
Okay, I was just curious because last time I left, I knew there was some talk about looking at the roof. I was just wondering if that had ever been done. I did get Jesse's, I emailed a couple weeks ago, I do believe, and Jesse was saying something about duct system.
I was gonna ask Rocco about that. When we talk about evaluating the roof, if we're gonna, do we have duct work already in place for the heating system?
I'm not sure. That's probably what Jesse thought on this question.
So if we have duct work already in place for the heat system, which I'm assuming, Evan's the one that actually mentioned it last time, was those units would go on the ground, not the roof, if we were gonna feed right into the same duct system, I think. So. Is it radiant floor heat?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have any kind of existing duct work?
No. There's air conditioning in the kitchen area and the bathroom area, but outside of that, no, not in the main.
We don't have any duct work up in the eaves or anything like that? Okay.
I just started something, so I just want to make sure I follow through. So I was just wanting to just check and see. Also, I was thinking about some fundraising ideas also to help. I know it's a busy time of year, it's Christmas and stuff, so I was thinking maybe after the first of the year, maybe presenting maybe some fundraising ideas, maybe I have some ideas about, but I just didn't want to bother people at that now because it is a busy time of year, so I figured we could wait till the beginning of the year. And I know air conditioning isn't much of a talk now because who wants to talk about air conditioning with as cold as it is outside? But I just didn't want this to fall through the cracks, so I just wanted to do a follow-up was all, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Wheeler, please.
Yes, my name is Dan Wheeler and I represent Evanston Hall of Fame. Mayor Williams, City Council. I'm here tonight to express our deep gratitude and thanks for providing such great facilities at the Roundhouse and at the machine shop. We've been able to use those facilities for the last 12 years for banquet or installation banquet and I just want to give a thank you to the council and the mayor, all the people that are involved with making that a great event for us. Everything is done, it's taken care of. And then I would really like to give a special thanks to Mickey Cox. She helps us because we have to start in September, so we started in September this year to try and figure out the days that would be available for in September of 2025. And we will know sometime tonight when homecoming is and she's worked with us on three different dates and when we decide then, that's what we'll do. So she just does a great job in helping us and I just want to, I'm a little tardy being here because our event was a couple of months ago, but just a real deep heartfelt thanks, not only for me, from our committee.
Excellent, we'll make sure that she hears that, thank you.
And I have, and Mrs. Harris, if you would.
Excellent, thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Kathy Cook. I just want to know what you guys have been thinking about the maternity ward is closing in December and what are we gonna do as a city to help this out? We can't not have a maternity ward. We can't have no women's help. I don't know. Can we talk these doctors into getting their own business running? I don't know. Any suggestions?
I've been kicking this around since it happened. It's gutting, you know, it hit so, so hard. And when I looked, I did some research and I looked and maternity deserts and why the hospitals are cutting it, it's because we have a declining population and our population is getting older. So somebody sitting in an office and, you know, crunching numbers, we don't look like a viable place for a maternity ward. But what that means in actuality is that the travel times are going to extend the issues of getting, you know, just going down to Park City or somewhere else that has it as a $75 in gas round trip for somebody, not to mention if anybody gets in an emergency. It's been a huge concern. Now, these are private, in fact, Mike and I have talked about this a lot because it's with his healthcare background and, you know, these private, there's nothing you can do to change businesses, you know, they're an independent business. But what possibly that can be done by the city needs to be explored in many different ways because I do not want to sit here in a year and sign some type of resolution for the Karen Act or the Rebecca Act because we've lost too many women and children on the way down the, and we all know as women, it's gonna take the right ones. You know, we have to lose the right women before things engage because if they don't come from the right part of the tracks or they have too many kids by too many dads or they don't have the right financial background or they don't have this, they get dismissed. And I want to head that off beforehand because every woman and child deserves to have the care that they need immediately, not on the side of the road. I personally take this because I had eight miscarriages to have my son and I would not be here if I didn't have immediate emergency care on two of them. We, it is, there's only so much our ER can do, those things need to be engaged, maybe Mike can talk a little bit more about that. But no, we risk the possibility of good people losing the ability to have children forever or having them on the side of the road as they're trying to get down to Park City. Birth is a strange thing, you know, it just happens. And Albs wasn't, my son wasn't the most, that ended up in an emergency C-section. But the care, not having that facility to have your daily or your prenatal care, the repercussions from that will be not only heartfelt, but it will be catastrophic on the community financially because when women cannot get care, especially the women that we, that wouldn't necessarily be able to take the time off or spend the $75 in gas money to go traipsing somewhere for enough appointments, that's gonna come back in a different way. And so there are great minds in this community, I've always said that, and this is something that needs to be fought and fought hard and come up with ideas and solutions to help engage to combat this. I don't know what they are, it's gonna be a team of people and I hope every single person on this council before it's their daughter or granddaughter that needs this care comes to the table and we're able to focus and do something.
Thank you. Just this morning, I was driving down to Salt Lake City to take Mike to the airport and it is snowing like crazy. Now, I'm not in labor, but I can't imagine being in labor and driving through what we did this morning and even driving back was scary. So I, you know, we definitely need to keep this in mind and maybe come up with something.
Kids tend to come on the worst nights of the year. We all know that. They like to, they wait till the snowstorm for, to make their, yeah. And, yeah, I just, there's a solution sitting here. I know it and I have faith in every single one of us that sits up here and in this room and in this community to come up with good ideas that can help.
If you need, you know, a committee of some sort, I would be welcome to be on a committee of some sort. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Just to address that one, I'm not sure if you saw the reply from the governor. The governor was here and got posed that question. He was gonna ask, I can't remember the exact number, but a certain amount, a high number of pregnancies that occur in Wyoming are Medicaid. And he was gonna hopefully ask for this new legislation to up the amount of money that is funded to Medicaid was his response. So I don't know if anybody saw that. He posted that the other day, so. What's that?
I was in his ear the whole night, we had dinner with him.
Yeah, so I think he's aware. The hard thing is, is a government agency to tell a private business what to do. to tell a private business what to do, the, you just, that's out of bounds, but I do know, I've, I've had one child born at this hospital, I've had one born in Salt Lake, I've had one born in Ogden. Our old model used to be, we'd have one OB-GYN that would handle everything, and be that may not have been the greatest business model, it seemed to work for us. Maybe we could somehow convince the hospital to at least do that, or have the conversation with them, that, that, if I was to be in the position to talk to the hospital, that was probably the approach I would take, hey, can we find some sort of business model that would work?
Mr. Harris.
This hospital did the same thing in Rollins, Wyoming. Where are they gonna get help here? In Rollins, Wyoming. We're likely to have the loss at Trump so close.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mayor, the. We've got three highly qualified midwives in Evanston, and I know that one of them, three out of us have been here for years, talked to Dr. Murray recently, and hoping to somehow get a birthing center established here, but as he told me, that would cost us. But we do have three highly qualified, highly trained midwives, but so many of these young women are high risk, and that, they, they can't work with midwife.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mayor, the, to follow up on Counselor Lynn's comment, the governor did address this, but he also has submitted his supplemental budget request for the biennium, and in that, he specifically mentioned Evanston and the, and the issue that he, that was brought up in that form. He also mentioned the, and I can't remember what he termed the concept, but communities like housing.
Oh, yeah.
So that others in the area, Hemmer, Bridger Valley, you know, maybe farther north and to the, to a, to a birthing center to provide, long-term solutions to provide housing or accommodations so that people could come get the care here. That was one of his, the other, he said in his budget message was, he had asked the legislature to fund, and I'm gonna say this wrong, because I'm not familiar with the terms, but there's a Medicaid reimbursement rate for pregnancies and deliveries, and he wanted the legislature to fund that at, I want to say a higher level may not be the right word, but to make, to make the repayments greater, so that that would hopefully add some incentive to retaining these.
That was the raising, yeah, raising the funding for the Medicaid, that was what he talked about.
I guess what I'd just add is, is we are, I don't think anybody here is, you know, not concerned about this, this issue, I have had conversations myself with some of the local doctors and pursuing with them, some ideas from them, to how we can kind of hopefully persuade the hospital to reconsider this decision, and so I think there's a variety of people that are working to that end, if, if, if at all possible. It is difficult to tell private business what to do, but we can certainly encourage them and hopefully get them to reconsider that, because it, it impacts our community greatly, from not just a, not just a medical standpoint, from an economic development standpoint, from a community, you know, quality of life type of issue, so we're, we're concerned about this as well, and we're, we're looking into options.
It takes a long time to build an OB practice, like years and years and years, and the doctors were, the doctors that were here were working on a rotating basis, so there was one here, and then they, they had come in from, I can't remember where, but somewhere else, and they would, they would, they shared, they basically all shared their practice, and they owned a house in town, and the house is already up on the market, so I'm not even sure, I'm, and I'm not, don't, I'm not even sure where they would be and to try to turn around and rebuild that practice, because they've only been working on their practice for a few years, so if you watch the numbers when you change OBs, they go like this, so you get one retired, it takes a while for that other one, for them to pick up, because OB care is very personal and very, and women need to feel very comfortable in that practice. There's, there's, it's in my understanding and watching what I've seen and talking to people, we already have been losing people out of the community for, for OB care, because pro, in my opinion, and I want to know, it's my opinion, it's not, though I did work in administration of the hospital for a lot of years, at a time that they asked us to shut OB down years and years ago, and we fought against it, and we kept it open during that time, but I'm part of it, was we were, everybody can remember Dr. Baldwin, the old, old people can remember Dr. Baldwin, when Baldwin was fading his practice and Hanson was coming in, it, it, we, we, we felt that same thing, and then Hanson was leaving, and these other guys were coming in, we've, you know, and I'm not there to know why or where, I know though the hospital is regulated by the federal government, they're regulated heavily, they're regulated by state, and to meet those criteria and different things can be, can be a very difficult thing, and there's multiple factors that always play in when a hospital makes those decisions, and I'm glad I, I would have been stomping my feet as the nurse exec when I was out there, I did before, we, but, you know, Quorum Healthcare is in a different spot than CHS was, was too at that time, so different ownership, different, lot of, lot of things that play into it, and I pray that we get the best outcome. Birthing centers are great, but birthing centers can really only take care of well ba, well babies, and so we have to, and I know some of the Utah hospitals have things for high-risk pregnancies, and so they can go down and they can do what Mr. Harris was saying, stay in housing and stuff that's close, so they're more readily available, so I just, we have, we do have some really, really good family practice-type people that will help monitor and help those people get to make sure that they are getting to the care they need, and to check, identify risk early is, is always my hope and prayer.
Anyone else like to address the council? Welcome. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I just first want to thank those that supported me in the election, and I'm looking forward to working with each one of you in the council, and look forward to serving the City of Evanston.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good to, good to work with you. Anyone else? If not, we will adjourn, thank you, everyone.